Okay. Good evening, everybody. It's Monday, December the 5th, 2022, and this is a regular meeting of Moscow City Council. Julia?
Please stand if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, collision. Okay, before we jump in, I want to point out that we are now missing one of our city councilors. Ann Zabala has resigned from the council to move away. And so we have an opening on city council. If anybody is interested in trying out for that seat over there, please drop me a note and put yourself forward.
Do you want to sit next to it? Here we go.
So, yeah. Okay. Next up is a consent agenda, and these are items that have been vetted by the Public Works and Finance or Administrative Committees. They're routine or non-controversial in general, and any item can be removed for separate consideration by any member of the council.
You're in, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Julia?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
And Haley?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda passes. Next up is mayor's appointments, and is the case once a year or so. We have a lot of people who are re-upping for various commissions, and we also have a slate of new nominees for the commissions as well. This is going to be fairly lengthy, maybe not as lengthy as some of the wherazas I read for proclamations, but I'm going to do them in two separate parts. One is for new appointments, and the other one is for reappointments. So by way of appointments, we have Geraldo Alvarez for the Farmers Market Commission to expire 12/31/2025 as a specialty vendor rep. Cassie Smith for the Farmers Market Commission, expiring 12/31/2025 as the crafts vendors rep. Gretchen Hayes, Parks and Rec Commission, expiring 12/31/2023. Allison Tompkins for the Urban Renewal Agency, expiring 12/31/2024, Member-at-Large. Samuel Gallagher, Sustainable Environment Commission, expiring 12/31/2023. And Nick Koenig, Moscow Tree Commission, expiring 12/31/2024. So.
I move approval of that slate of appointments.
Second.
Gina and Sandra on that one. Haley?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And Julia?
Aye.
Are any of those people here? And if you would, if you want to come up and say a word or two at the microphone, you don't have to, but come right up ahead if you'd like. I love it, it's an entire entourage.
Yes.
Excellent. Just introduce yourselves so we know who you are.
What commission?
Good evening, my name is Sam Gallagher, and I put my application in for the Sustainable Environment Committee. I just thank you for the consideration and putting my application forth for vote. I look forward to serving to the best of my capacity for the city of Moscow.
Great, thank you.
Nice mug. My name is Cassie Smith, and I put in my application for the Arts Representative on the Moscow Farmers Market Commission. I'm a local potter here in Moscow. Thank you. I have been with the Moscow Farmers Market for seven seasons now, and so I look forward to being able to serve my community in a bigger capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nick. I just moved to Moscow. I'm a PhD student studying tree rings, so I think it's apt among the tree commissions. So thank you so much. I'm really excited to bring maybe like aging the heritage trees potentially to the commission.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah, so we can know like what year they were born, which would be really cool.
Best earrings.
I'm Gretchen Hayes. I put in for the Parks and Recs Commission. I have four kids that are all involved in Parks and Recs. I care passionately about parks and recreation for children in this town.
Right on.
Thank you all for volunteering, much, much appreciated. Move on to the giant list of reappointments for the people who are so dedicated that they are coming back for a second helping on the commissions for which we are all tremendously grateful. So Joel Enforce for the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, expiring 12/31/2025. Ellen Peterson for an Affordable Housing Commission, expiring 12/31/25. Mackenzie Lawrence, Farmers Market Commission, expiring 12/31/2025. Nels Reese, Historic Preservation Commission, expiring 12/31/2025. Cynthia King, similarly. Alexander Tong, same. Eli Jones, Human Rights Commission, expiring 12/31/2023, a high school non-voting member. Janet Arger Sager, Human Rights Commission, 12/31/2025. Morgan Chaffey and Kristen Haltoner, same. Donna Woolston, the Moscow Arts Commission, expiring 12/31/2026. Also Sandra Stoops and Lauren McClary, same appointments in commission. Becky Chastain, Moscow Pathways Commission, expiring 12/31/2025. Also Margaret Dibble for the same. Sandra Kelly, Moscow Urban Renewal Agency, expiring 12/31/2027. Steve McGeehan, Moscow Urban Renewal Agency, expiring 12/31/2027. Susan Peterson, Parks and Recreation Commission, expiring 12/31/2025. Also Mark Heinlein, Nancy Tribble for the same. Joel Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Commission.
What?
Yeah. Joel Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Forty-third year.
12/31/2027. Also Nels Reese for the same. And those two guys have been on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, for upwards of 30 years.
Maybe more.
And so.
Joel's been on for 41.
Yep, a long time, which is great. Ian Slater for the Sustainable Environment Commission, 12/31/2023, high school non-voting member. Tina Hilding, Sustainable Environment Commission, 12/31/2025. Steve McGeehan, Sustainable Environment Commission, 12/31/2025. Mary Jo Hamilton, the Tree Commission, 12/31/2025. And Pamela Brunsfeld, also the Tree Commission, 12/31/2025. And that is the list of reappointees. Sandra?
I move that we approve the list of appointees to their respected commissions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Julia?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
And down on the end?
Aye.
Haley? So those are all approved, and so I would like to personally thank everybody who volunteers for a commission. It's a commitment, it helps this body up here with our decisions, it keep Moscow moving in the right direction, and the effort and the time that the commission members put into all of the details and forward-looking aspects of commission life that they put in is much appreciated. And for those who aren't on a commission, I seriously urge you to think about joining one of these commissions because there are openings. Find one that suits you, you can find that online on the city's website. Put in an application, and I am happy to appoint you, really. Okay. We won't ask those folks to come up and speak because they've all been here before and been at the podium speaking in the past. Next up is the public comment and mayor's response period for 15 minutes in three-minute chunks. Come up and tell us what's on your mind, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda or pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board of Adjustment. Just come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and in a three-minute chunk of time, tell us what's on your mind. Any takers?
My name is Stevie Steely Johnson, and I reside at 1450 Mill Road in Moscow. Mayor, councilors, here I am again, hello. In June, INW formally requested a special fee increase using a clause in our contract that allows us to ask for unscheduled changes to be made due to unusual and unforeseen circumstances. Since then, we have been back and forth with city staff, trying to address four specific areas where costs have increased dramatically in ways that are impossible to predict. Those costs include fuel, metal, totes, and payroll. I am very pleased that we appear to have reached common ground on two of those issues. We continue to have problems coming to a resolution regarding payroll and fuel in particular. INW understands it is city staff's intention to solve every issue before information is presented to council for approval. We thank them very much for their work on this and are requesting official approval of the proposed changes addressing metal and tote costs, as well as changes to the roll-off program that we worked out in May. However, the solution proposed to address fuel does not cover the real cost of doing business in the waste management sector, especially when taking into account the unique terrain and types of vehicles that we employ. We ask the councilors to help expedite a resolution that can be implemented in a way that allows INW to continue to provide the service in which the community has grown accustomed to for the immediate and foreseeable future. I have a packet that I will email to you. I was going to print it off, but it's over 100 pages, so I don't want to print all of that, with more information as to why this increase is warranted. In a bit of context, we have extremely long-term contracts, and INW does not have the authority to increase service costs or alter services to cover rising expenses, as other larger corporations do. So unlike in the restaurant industry per se, where the cost of chicken goes up, a restaurant gets to decide, well, I'm going to raise the price of the poultry dish, or I'm not going to sell it at all. That's not really a decision that's in our hands. We need support from city staff and swift action that will help make the best of a difficult situation. The sad fact is that more than 130 waste management companies like ours have gone under or been bought out this year alone. Others have raised their fees as much as 25% or more. The companies that remain have benefited from timely action by forward-thinking community leaders, and we ask Moscow's leadership to follow suit. INW is committed to doing the right thing by our clients and our community, as we have for three generations. If the city values having a locally-owned, family-run company in this position, one who shares your vision for a cleaner, more sustainable future, we ask that you take our request seriously and work with us on a resolution. Thank you for your time, and please reach out to me if you have any questions or require further information. Right now, I'm going to give you this beautiful infographic, and then look for my email with more information. I'd love to sit down with you guys.
Okay, thank you, Stevie.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
I can read it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Good to go?
Good to go.
All right. Council, mayor, I appreciate this opportunity to take a few minutes.
First name and address.
Oh, sorry. I am Brandon Johnson. I reside at 1450 Mill Road, Moscow. Council, mayor, I appreciate this opportunity to take a few minutes to let you know just how committed we are to serving this community. When my grandfather passed away, my Grandma Diane was a nurse in Kootenay, less than familiar with the world of garbage. However, she had a major decision to make, sell the company and try to find a way to restart, or leave her nursing career to manage it. I'm not sure how many people in this town, other than some of our own employees, remember my Grandma Diane, barely over five foot tall, but a titan nonetheless. Even now, our industry consists of more than 90% men. It was a rugged, unfriendly, and unfamiliar environment, perfect conditions to show someone's true resiliency. The challenges that she overcame have had me question my own toughness many times. She started a legacy of service and commitment to this community that will carry on for generations beyond my own. My grandma was not always nice. She was authentic, unrelenting in her beliefs, no matter what other people told her. She instilled these traits in my father, my aunt, my uncles. My dad has served this community for more than 50 years as a garbage man. His years on the trucks passed some time ago. Now he should be enjoying the final chapters of his life, retired, spoiling his grandkids. However, true to the commitment instilled in him by my grandmother, he's risked everything to keep our doors open, again putting our employees and this community above his own comfort and financial future. The commitment my family feels to be a part of this community isn't just the world of garbage. My Aunt Raylene was a pioneer in recycling and fought to get our local facility built and operating before recycling was ever cool, knowing it was the right thing to do. She helped it grow from there, bringing awards and recognition to the facility for having the best programs in the state. She was committed to seeing our community become more sustainable and making services accessible for everyone. My wife is so similar and is a constant reminder to how powerful simply believing in what you're doing can be. Like my dad, my uncle has worked every position within the company. Sometimes he's even excited about it, others not so much. My family's service to this community is not only related to this company, though. My grandparents, Bill and Shirley Green, owned and operated Green's Body and Paint for over 40 years, and Shirley served as a county commissioner in the 90s. Much like my Grandma Diane, they started a legacy of service I strive to uphold and fully intend on passing on to my children, and so on. My aunt, who started as a waitress at the Moscow Il House, worked her way up to eventually buy not just the business, but the property it sits on. In so many ways, we are the community we serve, and we care as deeply as anyone for its future. A definition of community I resonate with is a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. The reason I'm speaking to you about my family's spot in our community is because without people willing to fight for their goals and share in their interests like my family has, that feeling of fellowship does not exist. I can't claim that every one of our fellow employees here shares my passion for sustainable living and clean outdoors, but I recognize the amazing sense of community they feel from you and everyone else in their day-to-day work. Whether it be the unintended intimate knowledge you gain of people who don't beg their trash, or the kids that wait by their stop each week to run the handles on the truck, or the birthday we get to pull up to and be the coolest people on the planet for a while, that fellowship is real. We're here, fighting for our goals and sharing our interests. I hope that as you hear the information today and read more into it later, that as leaders of our community, you look past what city staff is putting in front of you in order to decide for yourself what seems right. We are asking for relief well within the bounds of our contract, not favors. We are not trying to pad our margins or profit off the hardship of our friends and neighbors. We simply want to be able to continue doing what is right by you, the Moscow community. Our company, its employees, and my family have gone above and beyond what is necessary to prove our commitment to getting this job done. We are the furthest thing from industry standard, heavily favoring the city of Moscow. I urge you to ask questions, see the data, tag along with our employees to see what they do every day. Please familiarize yourself with what our mission is, and I invite you to see for yourself what that commitment looks like through our actions each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Shirley Green, or Grandma. And Brandon mentioned some wonderful things. I never knew that when I was county commissioner that the Johnsons would be part of my family, and it's pretty exciting. And when I first started as county commissioner, the thing on the docket, the agenda that we had to take care of were the new subtitle deregulations for landfills, and whether we were going to have a landfill here, or whether we were going to transport our waste to Arlington. My husband will tell you for many, when we went through this, we did not go on a vacation without checking out the landfills in the cities that we went to. I had the opportunity to fly on the corporate jet to Arlington, where we decided to work with for the transfer station. And I also worked on the original plans for the recycling center with Larry Kirkland. And so I've been involved in the community forever, and I am really proud of what Latos Sanitation has done. And I have seen some amazing things since Brandon and Stevie have stepped in as general managers and their position there. I don't know if any of you have made it out to the community days at the landfill, but it is so fun. And I just had such a great time just visiting with people and seeing these little kids so excited about getting in that heavy equipment, and seeing the parents excited too, and learning more about what garbage is. Garbage is an incredible thing, and you'll never be through with garbage. And I just hope that you will be supportive of what these kids are doing, and I shouldn't call them kids, they're young adults, but they're always kids, your kids are always kids to you. So thank you for this opportunity to share that.
Thank you, Shirley. Okay, time for one more, if anybody else wants to jump up. Yeah.
Hi. Tom Sokolowski, 1341 Tamarack Street. I just wanted to bring up, on Tamarack Street, our cul-de-sac has flooded twice in the last four years, and not for many years before that. There have been a couple of new developments put in above, you know, above, up above us on the stormwater drain system. One of my neighbors has been working with the city, and he's gotten really good response from, I believe, Cody and Dana about it, so we're very happy to hear that. We just want to put on the record that we're concerned about it, and especially with the new development going up on Trail Road, all that water is going to be coming through our, through our system, and the pipes are only as big as they are. So we just want that on the record, and people keep an eye on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate those concerns. Okay. Hearing no one else, we'll move forward to agenda item number four, which is a public hearing, the Rolling Hills 10th Edition Preliminary Platte from Mike Ray. The way the public hearing works, for people who haven't been through one before, is I open the hearing, staff presents the issues and the application. Council has any questions, they hit them up on mic at the moment. Afterwards, we hear from the applicant. Subsequent to that, we hear testimony in favor of the application, followed by testimony in opposition, followed by neutral testimony, after which we hear a rebuttal from the applicant, if the applicant desires. And at that time, we close the public hearing, and the council enters into its deliberations. So keep in mind that this is kind of a formal court-wise thing, and if you want to speak to the application, you have to do it at the right time. But at this time, the hearing's open. Mike?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. So before each night, we have a public hearing, this is Rolling Hills 10th Edition Preliminary Platte. The property is six acres in size, and the proposal is to create 20 lots ranging from a little over 7,000 to 12,376 square feet in size. So this is the subject property, highlighted in red at the center of your screen. You can see the current city limits boundary with the purple line. So the intersection of Third and Sixth Street there, to your west. Location here. So this is Rolling Hills 9th Edition, which is just under construction. Rolling Hills 8th Edition, as well as 7th Edition here with Panorama and Atani Drive. I'd like to point out Mojer Park property directly to the north, and this is Harvest Hill 2nd Edition, which has yet to be developed as well. Just a closer view of that property, you can see Ryan Lane has been stubbed into the property, as well as Third Street here to the west. This is a topography map. Each one of those lines represents one feet of elevation change. You can see the property slopes to the northwest. Quite a bit of elevation difference between the lots on Panorama and this property, you're looking at about 30, 20 to 30 feet there. Brings us to the comprehensive plan, land use designation for the property, it's auto-urban residential. The park to the north there is parks and open space. All the surrounding property is auto-urban residential as well. So what that states, it's primarily single-family lots, 7,000 to 11,000 square feet in size, a little more isolated from surrounding uses, which may require automobile transportation. It's typically low to moderate density residential, three to six units per acre as far as the density. Could include a mixture of detached, single-family, twin-home, and townhouse residential dwellings. And then it points to the R1, R2, and R3 is the appropriate zoning designations for those properties. Currently designated as R2, as far as the zoning designation, as well as all the surrounding area. So what the zoning code states about the R2 zone, it's appropriate in the following circumstances, where single-family dwellings predominate the area. Terrain's not harshly irregular, and smaller lot sizes could be accommodated without extensive earthwork. Utilities and other public facilities are adequate for the densities allowed, and the existing lot development patterns and policies embodied within the comp plan also guide the application of this zone. Really, primarily a single-family residential district. Facilities. So brings us to the platte before you tonight, 20 single-family lots, a little over 7,000 to 12,376 square feet in size. I'd like to point out the R2 zone, the minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet, and the minimum lot width is 60 feet, so all those proposed lots meet that requirement. Third Street is designated as a collector through this section, which means it's 34 feet in width, with bike lanes on both sides of the street, no on-street parking, and curb gutter sidewalks on both sides as well. So brings us to the preliminary platte being proposed. You can see the extension of Third Street through the property in that northeastern direction, terminating in a temporary cul-de-sac. Ryan Lane will be extended and connected in T into Third Street. There is an existing pedestrian sidewalk connecting Panorama, that'll be continued to connect to Third Street and the Mojer Park property. You can see the Mojer Park property here to the north. There is about 240 feet of street widening included as part of this, and that'll be about 10 to 11 on-street parking spaces adjacent to the park. It's just with the topography of the park, it's going to be challenging to create a parking lot, and so working with Parks and Rec Department ended up widening that there to create some on-street parking opportunities. This is the proposed grading plan. You can see quite a bit of topography here. Like I mentioned previously, there's about 20 to 30 feet on average of elevation change from the lots on Panorama, as well as a little bit of topography leading into the park as well. Going over utilities, so water service, the water mains are currently extended to the current terminus of Third Street, those will be extended along that alignment. 2012 Comprehensive Water System Plan indicates the existing systems adequate for potable and fire flows. Sanitary and storm mains currently exist in Third Street as well. Our 2011 Comprehensive Sewer System Plan indicates existing systems adequate to serve the additional flow. And then, of course, our stormwater runoff control standards apply to this subdivision as well. It must be detained at the predevelopment rate and then conveyed to the system. Parkland dedication has been previously satisfied through Mojer Park, so no further dedications required. Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing for this matter and occurred October 26th of this year, and they recommended approval of the proposed platte with no conditions. So staff's recommendation for the council tonight is to conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony received, approve the preliminary platte with no conditions and adopt P&amp;Z's reasoned statement of relevant criteria. And I'd certainly try to answer any questions you had.
Does that, the Third Street parking, does that eliminate the bike lane on that side, or are they both, is there enough room for both of those?
There's enough room for both of those.
Okay.
Correct.
Can I ask another?
Sure.
Well, we just heard from Tamarack, people, from somebody on Tamarack, sorry, Tom on Tamarack. And so I'm wondering about the runoff from those upper lots on Panorama, how is that mitigated with this new development?
There's a stormwater detention pond in Rolling Hills 8th Edition, and so that's been adequately sized.
Thank you.
I can go. I was going to flip and show you where it's at here. Let's see. Might be a better view here. Located right here at the intersection of Third and Crestview would be the stormwater detention pond. So yeah, that's been adequately sized, it's been upsized to accommodate Rolling Hills 9th Edition, as well as this proposed Rolling Hills 10th Edition. So included is a stormwater detention report from an engineer, so they verify that that's all accurate, and it's going to detain the water at the predevelopment rate.
My question on that is really that the person who spoke just now, as well as somebody who previously talked a lot about the Eddington Edition, about those stormwater stuff, and we believe that it is, but obviously it's flooding. And so my question is, is how do we just trust at this time that's going to be right when the last two times seems that we're having a problem?
Well, those developments are still under construction. So once those are fully built out, then you'll have the stormwater system, you know, it will convey it at a lot less of a rate than it is now. Really, it's just acting as more of just the entire graded area, which is really impermeable, and it's conveying all that stormwater into certain areas, and once And once we have the proper systems in place, you expect that to get a lot better. And certainly, city staff is working with the neighbors in that area and really trying to identify the problem and hopefully work on a solution.
And to figure out how to prevent that from happening this time?
Well, our engineering department certainly works with the applicant's engineer and reviews all of the reports. And if there's any red flags, certainly work through those issues. But, you know, it's really up to the applicant's engineer in order to verify it's going to meet all of our city stormwater runoff standards.
I have a question, follow-up on that, if I can, unless Bill was going to jump in. Were you gonna? Okay. My question, and it's kind of meant to answer part of Maureen's concern. When we do this design and we say, okay, this stormwater basin or the stormwater drain will catch and do what we need to do. How, is that a, do we have a margin of error on that? Or is that for 20 years? Or, because I mean, the Tamarack area, I mean, that's my parents' age subdivision. And so I'm, which isn't old, it's just, it's just experienced. There you go. So I kind of want to know what we, when we do that kind of thing, what is the, is it a 10-year estimate? That kind of thing?
I think it's two 10 and 25-year events, I believe.
Okay.
But yeah, typically, you have a few constraints. Sometimes this is the existing system, so just downstream. I mean, newer subdivisions, a lot of the subdivisions may, aren't developed recently. So it may have been the 60s, 70s, and 80s. Maybe the infrastructure wasn't adequately sized during that time. And so we have capital projects that go back and replace a lot of those lines. And so I think you have some different factors you're dealing with, with some stormwater in town.
Yeah, and we do have some ways to go back and remedy some of those problems.
Cool. And I was just going to say pretty much the same thing that Mike commented on at the Tamarack area. I think we've identified there's some downstream segments of the stormwater system that may be undersized. So while the individual project has to go through an engineering stormwater design to ensure that once the project's complete, it won't discharge it at a greater rate than the pre-development condition. But until that system's been complete, it is truly capturing all the water, is metering as is intended to. You know, they kind of had a temporary construction detention facility that was overwhelmed during some of these very intense stormwater events. And so I think the discharge rate exceeded the designed system because it wasn't completed at that time. And then some of the downstream segments had limited capacity in the Tamarack ponderous area. So we've identified some short segments that needed to be increased in that system. So we will be working with engineering and the Stormwater Department to work on those improvements. In this particular location, all of the Rolling Hills conveyance is all very new. And so we won't have that same condition of a constraint of the existing system.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you both.
Okay, any other questions right now? Okay. Next up, anything from the applicant?
Hello, I'm Ryan Etani, the applicant, and just wanted to make myself available for any questions that you might have. I think Mike did a great job at summarizing the project, so don't really have anything to add to that.
Well, stick around, you'll have a chance to rebut if anything comes up in the meanwhile.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, at this time, public testimony in favor of the applicant. Testimony in opposition. And testimony of a neutral flavor. Okay, I guess rebuttal is not apt to be needed, so the public hearing is closed at this time. And counsel, please proceed with deliberations and decision.
Mr. Mayor, Ryan answered the only question I had at Planning and Zoning, which was how does it feel to have a street named after you? So it was good discussion. I am happy that we have developers who are able to take on small-scale developments as needed. And there is an inventory shortage, and so I am happy to see this continue on the east side of town. So no concerns for me.
Not a concern, I just can't remember, Mike, and I was trying to scroll through and was unsuccessful. How many potential housing units?
There's 20 lots, so 20 single-family dwellings, correct?
And that has, and just to, just to make sure we're all in the good, everything is set up for fire and school buses, if maybe?
Correct, yeah.
Good question.
That's it.
Okay, Gina?
I am thrilled, similar to what Counselor Lewis was saying. I like to see the infill development. This is very good, I appreciate that. So I have, I have no concerns, and I appreciate the discussion of existing infrastructure versus new. That's important to keep in mind. But other than that, I think this is a good thing that, I'm sure. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the preliminary platte with no conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Haley?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. One more action to be had.
Sir, I move that we adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that one? Julia?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes this action on the tonight's agenda. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
On to number five, which is an update to the 2016 Bike Route and Facilities Plan. Cody Riddle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you'll recall, we actually, you actually last saw this item back in September of this year. At that time, we discussed the fact that we have a bike facilities plan that dates back to approval in May of 2016. We had presented to council a series of updates that had been vetted through the Transportation Commission and Public Works and through committee that included, I believe, 14 proposed changes. Of those 14, council was largely supportive of the proposed changes, but did ask us to take a closer look at three specific segments. So that's what we're back here to discuss this evening, are those three segments that include Almond north of A Street, Polk north of Morton, White, or yep, Blaine between White and Harold. And then in between, in between that discussion, or when we set this back to the Transportation Commission, as from a staff perspective, we thought we were missing an opportunity to revisit the plan as it relates to Third between Polk and Hayes. So with that, we did go to A Street. Our, the current plan actually proposes bike lanes for that entire segment, other than a very small segment in front of all the industrial, commercial buildings there, just north of E Street. Our initial recommendation was, and the recommendation the Transportation Commission supported, was to install sharrows along that entire segment of Almond, with the idea that we would, could maximize on-street parking and still accommodate cyclists. We did have a good discussion when we took it back to the Transportation Commission. They actually, there was a lot of back and forth, and they, their recommendation was ultimately to install or to go back to the bike lanes, actually for the entire segment. From a staff perspective, we thought this through a little closer and think we're missing an opportunity, that there's probably a logical compromise here that's in the best interest of the businesses that are north of E Street, and then the cyclists and pedestrians. And so our recommendation would actually be, again, this is based on a lot of discussion with the commission, our own internal discussions, comments you had last time, would be at E Street. So to update the plan, to have the bike lanes from A up to E, and that at E is where we transition to sharrows, to where we can still accommodate that on-street, on-street parking for those businesses that currently use it fairly regularly today. And I'll kind of have a couple, couple pictures of that. So here, here you can see that, here you can see the segment here from E traveling north. You can see the existing businesses and some of the on-street parking that's, that's occurring. And I think most of us have probably used ourselves at, at times. Moving south, so the portion, the portion down closer to A Street, this is where we would, we would recommend that we go to the bike lanes. A lot of the, a lot of the traffic that turns on from A Street north on Almond is turning off, you know, before, up to E Street, and then traffic counts diminish quite a bit. And then you do have the added demand for parking. We actually have, you know, MZ, formerly known as MZ, has completed. They have their parking lot, you have their parking lot across Jackson that's been completed. And then also in terms of other parking that's available, those properties that about Almond, while they do park out there some now, you actually have that alley back there where they have alternative parking available that you don't have for those properties further to the north. So again, our recommendation here is that we have the bike lanes from A to E, and then north of E, we transition. Second segment that you asked us to look at, or asked the commission to look at a little closer, was Polk north of Morton. The plan currently suggests a buffered bike lane for this, this segment of roadway. Those are difficult to, difficult to maintain, somewhat of a novelty in this area, and typically designed for areas with higher speeds, higher volumes of traffic. So really not warranted here. Our original recommendation to council, and it was supported by the, the commission, was to look at sharrows along this entire segment, again, to maximize the amount of parking available. The commission did look at this segment again closer, and they recommended transitioning from the buffered bike lanes to a traditional bike lane. Then we would still, as you can see here, and I'll zoom in in a second, we would still have two areas of on-street parking in front of some existing duplexes. So here you can see where that would occur. You would have, you would have the bike lane facility, but then from rodeo south in front of those duplexes, and then down closer to Public and Morton, down at the southern end, you would have some on-street parking available. Otherwise, bike lanes to accommodate safer environment for the, for the cyclists. Here you can see just a couple of street views from Google that show the duplexes and the on-street parking need towards the southern end, and then again, up at the northern end near, near rodeo. The last segment you asked us to bring back was Blaine between White and Harold. The plan currently shows a different treatment on each side of the roadway. It actually, again, when I say the existing plan, it's the 2016 plan, shows, recommends a bike lane on the east side of Blaine, and then sharrows for the southbound or on the west side of Blaine. The commission, commission actually went back and forth on this one, probably more than either of, either of the others. They struggled with having a different treatment on both sides of the road. They struggled with removing, with the idea of removing parking adjacent to the fairgrounds. And ultimately, they did recommend on this one, consistent with staff's initial recommendation, to go with sharrows on both sides of the roadway. They did, they did suggest that in the future, if there's an existing sidewalk adjacent to the fairgrounds, right up against the sidewalk, in terms of, is this just, I suppose it's related to the bike lane, but they recognize that it's a constrained corridor for pedestrians walking along that fence. So just ask that we keep that in mind as we move forward. So again, they did, or did recommend that we implement sharrows on both sides of this roadway that would continue to allow on-street parking on both sides. And I think overall, with each segment, they did, they discussed this quite a bit. The idea that with on-street parking, you see this on some of our other roadways where there aren't any treatments. When you, you constrain things with on-street parking, it naturally, naturally calms, calms traffic to a degree. And so they were concerned with, any place we remove a lot of the on-street parking, that naturally will result in increased speeds. Oops, I'm going backwards. So the last segment, and again, this one wasn't initially before, before council, but after, after this was set over, we looked at this as an opportunity to address one more important segment, and that would be Third, generally from Polk over to Hayes. As it, as it is now, the bike lane actually ends roughly at Polk heading east, and cyclists are then forced out into the, out into the lane of, lane of traffic. And it gets, it gets a lot of use at commuters. I mean, it's, it's my regular route, and it is a tricky spot. There is room to accommodate bike lanes on both sides. And in terms of parking, it would require removal of that parking. But I think here, this is actually a fairly realistic picture. As you travel east of Polk, there's not a lot of use of parking on, parking on Third. Most of those homes actually have, and you can see it here, they have side streets, they have alleys, they have a lot of other options for, for parking. So we're not really too concerned about removing the parking to accommodate bike lanes in both directions, from Polk to Hayes. That was what we took to the Transportation Commission, and they were supportive of that, that recommendation. And you can see, you can see here where traveling east on Third, the bike lane, as it sits today, ends and forces you out into that lane of, lane of traffic. And then here, I think, to clean up the map, there'd be a logical transition heading back to the west. So as you come down the hill to transition away, like it does today, well, today it doesn't transition, but you transition away from the bike lane into probably sharrow, and then no treatment as, as cyclists are essentially at the speed of traffic coming on into, into downtown. So again, our recommendation today is a motion that, in addition to the changes that were approved or supported back on September 29th, or September 19th, to make the following updates to the bike facilities plan. First, that Almond Street include bike lanes between A and E, and then sharrows north of E Street. That Polk Street include bike lanes north of Morton, excluding the frontage that abuts those existing duplexes. Three, that Blaine Street, on Blaine Street, we have sharrows on both sides between White and Harold. And then finally, for Third Street, we have bike lanes, both directions, between Polk and Hayes, that will transition heading westbound into the downhill lane of traffic, somewhere near Van Buren. And then finally, with those, if that is the motion this evening, we would update that, update and clean up that exhibit to reflect the motion prior to the mayor's signature, that final resolution. And finally, I did want to note, and I mentioned this before, language that was, that's always been in the resolution. It always recognized that we're going to run into some little, strange little areas as we transition in and out of these bike lanes, on-street parking. And so the resolution, as it was originally written and is written today, indicates that, you know, if the routes and facilities plan is infeasible to implement due to incompatible infrastructure, then said routes will be adjusted accordingly. Certainly, in our minds, we don't look at this as changing whole, you know, entire block frontages, but in those transitional locations, there is, there is language there to accommodate that. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Maureen?
Who actually owns the land where the, who owns the land where the fairgrounds are?
The actual fairgrounds, it's just, it's just county, county land, yeah.
I'm just thinking who you have to negotiate, because that is such a thin sidewalk. And the idea of bikes with that really is pretty spooky idea. But I just wondered, in our future, the idea of negotiating and getting that expanded was really critical.
We would, we would need to work with the county, certainly. And then just the fact, I mean, the sidewalk has its width, and then with the fence so close to the sidewalk, that shy distance, shoulder distance, makes it even less effective, the width that it does have.
Thank you.
And with that, I also think with all the work that we've been doing on Mountain View, my guess is you may see some shifting as far as like bike usage. I don't know how much, I prefer the more residential streets because the traffic goes slower, and I would rather ride on sharrows than in bike lanes on occasion. Yeah, so I, after Sandra mentioned that she also does the Almond turn on her commute home, I was thinking the same thing, too. So the first proposal, I actually, if we're sticking with, oh, now I can't read my own notes. I said no lanes with sharrows all the way. And so that's what, so, but now the conversation is we will put lanes, okay, between Almond and E. I, that alley's not super great for those residents, and I'm also just, I don't want the conversation around parking that we always hear, which is focused so much on downtown and accessibility, to also turn into something about other city decisions and how it impacts parking. And so the more I was driving it, the most bikes I see who, I don't bike to Pullman because I'm not that in shape, but when I am driving home from Pullman and I see bikers, they will usually still choose to go straight through A with the lights because the cars know how to behave. So my two cents, I'm actually back to feeling like I want sharrows the whole length of Almond, and I, and I am probably throwing a sticky wicket in this by disagreeing because I'm thinking of the impact to those folks in particular, and those rentals. Because a couple of them are like quadplexes. And my other one that I'm, I really appreciate the chance to look at Polk and Hayes. I just realized, sorry, Third Street between Polk and Hayes, so the fourth proposal. There's one car who does park out there, and I get nervous every single try, every single time I ride past it where it does narrow, with the idea of doors opening. I'm really worried about the impact to event parking, though, with East City Park being an event hub. And so I'm less excited about that because I do feel like people do, when the merging happens, there are mindful people, Julia probably bikes more than anyone, so I'm curious to hear her thoughts. And so I'm not opposed for consistency's sake, but I do realize there's, it's- And so I'm not opposed for consistency's sake, but I do realize there's, it's kind of a negative impact to Ren Fair, Hemp Fest and rendezvous among any other events, the cornhole for a cause, anything that happens at East City Park. And so even though it's contained to weekends, it is a draw for people from out of town and I would hate to make it harder. And I also, residents already have a really hard time with the shift and the increase of parking that comes to East City Park that happens off those residential streets. So I'd be hesitant, especially when it's that close to East City Park, when you've got event, people who are trying really hard to make it accessible, what that could potentially do to some of our annual events. So those were the two I had.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, could briefly, I mean, as it relates to East City Park, we could certainly look at temporary closures of that, that frontage to accommodate.
Yeah, and I guess I just don't know, I, I can't even remember when, have we done that before? Is that like cake? Is that easy?
Yeah, you can, we could, you could bag the signs, you could close the, the bike lane for that weekend event. I mean, I'd hate to for, I'd hate to forego the benefit. Third Street has the most gentle grade east-west for, you know, the remaining 362 days of the year because of those few events. But I'd much rather do a temporary closure of the bike lane and it is only parking on one side that's available during that event.
It's, yeah.
So it's only, only on the south side of Third. So it's not parking on both sides of the street that's allowed there, it's just that one side.
My only question would be who would bear the cost of that because those events signage is often the most expensive things for those guys to rent. And so if that's something that the city is willing to.
We could probably manage that process.
Okay, then that would be my concern. Those were my notes. Thanks.
Oh yeah, you got called on by Haley.
Yeah. Lobbed it.
I just, thank you, Mr. Riddle for all your work. I appreciate you guys going back to look at this. I think it looks really good. I, I liked Almond Street, bike lanes from A to E, that was a great compromise. I hadn't thought of that, which is why we pay you the big bucks. I like the Polk Street changes. I like the new bike lanes from Polk to Hayes on Third Street. I think that's great. I, I just think Blaine Street is probably on all of our radar for some major fix at some point because having a brand new driver that I'm trying to teach to drive, I can tell you that Third Street is extremely narrow. And I, I drive like, I ride like this when she drives on down Blaine, so I'm afraid we're going to hit a car. But I, I wish we could have a better solution on Blaine, but I'm just willing to hope for the future and, and hope that that might be one of our new projects sometime. Because I think we'll have to address everything on Blaine Street at some point.
Sure.
So yeah, thank you so much for looking at this again.
Bill? If I may, just with respect to Blaine, we also look at what alternative parallel facilities we have available and what we've been building for both the underpass, the separated pathway facility on White Avenue is to take people to the fairgrounds and then run through the fairgrounds and then continue on the greenway up around Triangle Park and then up to the, you know, crosswalk there at six and continue. So there are alternate parallel routes for somebody who doesn't feel comfortable riding in, in the roadway itself to follow the greenway pathway through the fairgrounds and, and continue.
That's true.
But then they have a big hill to go up, but that's, sorry. I spoke out.
Which, what?
If I'm going home from the fairgrounds, it's a lot easier to go up Blaine on my bike than have to go through the green belt and then through the soccer fields and then up that hill.
Oh, the Euler.
Yeah.
Just a little Euler climb, I hate that.
But I, I do it because I'm too frightened to bike on Blaine. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I jumped in. Can I keep talking?
Yes, you may.
Can you stop?
I just, I want to thank the Transportation Department and Cody for taking a look at these. I'm never, this, I mean, you gotta know when you're fighting a battle, you're gonna lose and I'm gonna lose this one. I think you put way too much reliance and confidence on sharrows. I think it's like putting a Band-Aid on a gash, but I'm grateful to get even a little bit more of what we want. I still, I like the idea of it going all the way on, in front of the light, lighting, light, light cast place. I would, yeah, I wish we had more, but this is better than what we have. And I do, I really do appreciate the work that they put into this and grateful that they, I love hearing that they really hashed it out and had good discussions on it. So thanks for that.
Haley?
Can you go back to Almond Street one more time? I am. And so the yard waste would have sharrows. Okay, that was my other thought. That yard waste can get gnarly with people waiting on Almond. And so that would then be share, the end of the bike lane back to sharrows. Okay.
No, it'd be bike lanes still at that point.
It would be.
Bike lanes all the way up to E.
It would be bike lanes.
E is past, E is past Rosie's. Okay.
It would transition at E heading north.
That concerns, that concerns me.
It should concern you one way or the other though, because you're still gonna have people hitting bikes whether there's a bike lane or a sharrow or nothing. And having a bike lane might at least put a little more warning on there that, wow, there's a line there. What does that mean again, before you wham into somebody on a bike?
I'm also thinking in terms of like cars who are gonna ignore the bike lane and throw it in park while they're waiting for the yard waste because there isn't, there isn't a good cue for it. So I, I'm now, I'm all in on wanting sharrows all the way down Almond, which I know is, I may be in the minority up here with that. But I also just like thanks to you and the Transportation Committee for really digging in on this. But between the, between that turn and the actual bike behavior that I have seen and what I choose to do as a biker, as a passive biker who doesn't have an e-bike, so I don't work too hard and don't bike that often, but between that and yard waste, sharrows likely seems to be better for those neighbors and for the behavior that happens there.
Maureen?
I sat in, I'm a liaison for the Transportation Commission and I have to say, it was a very long and very, we're all very engaged in it. It went around and round and round. And I do want to say thank you for all the work that people on that commission did and the city staff has done as well, because it is a hard topic to figure out how to put bikes, walkers and streets all on and some of these properties, areas. Thank you.
Gina?
I have to say that Julia's acceptance and comfort with this does influence my opinion in that she is probably the most intrepid of all of us on a, on a two-wheeled thing. I, I hear Haley's concern about this specific area. I would almost, and I, and I also hear Counselor Kelly's, I don't even see sharrows. I see bike lanes. Bike lanes are, are something that's in my vernacular far quicker than sharrows. So I would, I would kind of disagree with Haley here, but I do think that, that, that transition to sharrows, I think will almost get ignored, to be honest with you. I would almost rather we had bike lanes or nothing, because sharrows to me just is kind of like, well.
Are you talking sharrows up north of E Street?
No, I'm talking keep the bike lanes going, but, or just ditch the sharrows altogether. To me, that is just kind of a, sharrows are not as awesome as they could be. But I do, I do feel very good that Julia feels comfortable with things and I agree with her for the most part, except right in this area. So.
Thank you, Cody.
Okay, it's decision-making time here, folks.
Don't we let people talk about it?
No, this is not a public hearing.
Oh, okay. I move that we approve the resolution to adopt changes to the bike route and facilities plan.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When's the next time we anticipate revisiting this plan?
It's.
Five years, four years?
Nothing's as needed, nothing's set in stone. So, and, and there's nothing that says we're going to go out, well, certainly not, certainly not today.
Not right this minute.
But you know, there's certainly no timeframe associated with this. You won't see it all just installed next summer. So as we implement some of this and learn from it, much like we did in, you know, this five or six years, I would guess sooner than that, but we can always come back.
Okay, that, that phrase and learn from it is what I want to make sure we do. Just continue to watch where we're, where we are and if we have pain points that come as a result of what we've done, I do want to see it sooner than four or five years.
Yeah, can we just put it on the calendar to look at it again in a year and I'll be, I'll be happy, because I'm not gonna, I will say I told you so. If we walk back from Almond, I will say I told you so. I will pass, I will pass the amendments with all the time that we put in, but.
Here's hoping.
Record now reflects that. Here we go.
Okay, voting time on approval of the resolution to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, is that, is that consistent with staff's recommendation, the floor? Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So Julia?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Haley?
No.
Okay. So that passes.
Thanks, Cody.
Great. Thank you, Cody. Next up is the updated personnel policies adoption from Bill.
Apparently personnel policies are not very exciting.
Running, running as daily. Wow.
Okay.
Someday they will be.
I know. I can hope, I can hope. So just a little bit of background, as the council's aware, over the course of, actually it's almost about over the last two years, council's been working to update various portions of the city's personnel policies and the council has reviewed and approved individual components of those policies as they've come forward, but we have not approved a consolidated comprehensive personnel policy document by resolution, which has been our past practice to signify the adoption of those policies. So we have been working to compile the changes that the council previously reviewed and approved into a comprehensive revised document for the council's review and approval. Some of the significant updates and changes and some of these you've seen before, we've got some updates to the employer employee code of conduct language, just, just identifying expectations for both the city as well as city employees. We have updated various policy provisions and statements to reflect current employment law and best practices. We've added a number of laws and statutes throughout the document. We did update our accident drug testing requirements. Currently, it requires at least $1,500 in property damage before a city employee is to undergo a drug test. It's really very easy to get to 1,500 in today's world. So we eliminated the property damage threshold. An employee operating city vehicles involved in an accident on a public or private road or on private property, they're gonna get drug tested. So we don't have to either call, wait, try to find somebody from the shop, take a look at it, give them, give us an idea, do we think it's gonna exceed 1,500 or not? Anytime we're in an accident involving somebody else's personal property or another vehicle operating the roadway, we're just gonna go ahead and have that employee tested. So we did go ahead and change that language. We did provide flexibility because we have had incidents that occur in the city shop yard, the typical backing into a post. We're gonna leave that at the supervisor's discretion, because there, that were just involves on the city's property, just the city's property and maneuvering on the yard, those tend to be the, somewhat of those more minor incidents. So we'll leave that at that supervisor's discretion and supervisors always have the discretion to require testing if they have reasonable suspicion that somebody's under the influence. That always exists. So we did update that section of the policies. We added Juneteenth as a paid holiday officially and then we also did a fair amount of work on the city's on-call, call and callback policies. So this addresses those essential operations for water, sewer or parks and facilities where we have to have an employee on-call 24 hours a day and to be able to respond to that. And so we have formalized and cleaned up those policies as well. We also through this process add paid parental leave. So we added four weeks of paid parental leave that didn't exist previously in the city's policies. And then the last item on here that we'll talk about in a little more detail is the draft before you actually has the addition of health insurance benefits for elected officials. And I wanted to talk, talk about that next. So in October of 2020, council did approve a modification to the health insurance benefit components of the personnel policies. In that draft, it stated that elected officials receive employment benefits as identified in a resolution adopted by the city council. And the city council had not adopted any such resolution, but that just, I think, was intended to maybe provide that flexibility, that opportunity for the council in the future. And we don't have any record of any council member or any, any other elected official, mayor, council ever having received health insurance benefits from the city. Then through the document revision, it changed to elected officials may receive health benefits. And then a further revision was changed to try to standardize and think language in that section that describes how we pay for benefits. And so the draft actually that you have in your packet today states the city will provide full coverage for elected official and 50% dependent care paid for the city Moscow. So that's something I want to talk about in a little more detail, but I think that was kind of inadvertently changed to make it consistent in that section. By state law and city code, council salaries and compensation are set by ordinance. So it's IDO Code 5203 that states essentially that the compensation shall be fixed by ordinance published at least 75 days before any general city election, which ordinance shall be effective for all said officials commencing on January 1st following said election. And then city code 811 or 8-1 identifies that the salary for effective officials shall be fixed by ordinance, the city code, rather than the 75 days prior to any general city election. We require that any adjustments to the salary must be specifically approved by ordinance at least six months prior to the effective date of such adjustments, given that they have to be effective on January 1st. State code actually puts us back to adopting that in, you know, essentially June of the year prior to a council election that will happen in November and then become effective in January of the following year. The monetary value, I know you're very well paid. I think a council stipend is about $732 a month currently, but if we were to extend full coverage of health insurance benefits, the monetary value of those benefits would probably meet or exceed the value of your current compensation. In order to ensure that everything is being done correctly and that we are evaluating and essentially changing the council's compensation in accordance with state law and in accordance with city code, we are recommending that we modify that section. So it'd be 24A1, which currently states will provide that full coverage and 50% dependence to just read for the time being, elected officials are not eligible to receive health benefits. So we're not making a modification tonight. And then the council can certainly review this. So I have this on the calendar for May coming up for this next year, because the last adjustment was made effective January 1st of 2022. We will have to pass an ordinance to make the adjustment and it's only fixed on the consumer price index is what's specified in city code, but we'll have to do that in May of this year. So we're six months ahead of when it'll be effective, technically June, I'd like to give myself a month's cushion before it'll be effective January 1st of 2024. And that would meet the 75 days prior to the election and also six months under city code. So we can certainly have this conversation. This was not, these changes in the draft were not made at any elected official's request. I think it was just a matter of going through the revisions and trying to standardize language that this ended up in this, its current form. So I would recommend that we make that one modification for the time being and then we can have a conversation outside of just the broader personnel policies about whether that's something the city council would like to entertain moving forwards, but we don't have to discuss that or decide that tonight. So, so staff's recommendation this evening is to approve the updated personnel policies with the amendment to section 24A1, state that elected officials are not eligible to receive health insurance benefits and approve the associated resolution. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions the council might have.
I have a question.
Haley, you look like.
I have, I have a, I have something I'm hoping to toss out, but Maureen can go first if you have a question, because mine's not necessarily a question.
Okay, Maureen, go.
On parental leave, I guess I'm curious on whether or not sick leave can actually be, I mean, after you use up your one month, can you then use sick leave?
It has been our past practice to allow, you need accrued leave, whether it's sick, comp time or vacation to be used for the care of a newborn child. And so oftentimes you'll see employees using a combination of the parental leave, sick leave, vacation to extend their time with a newborn child. And typically, you know, eight to 12 weeks is a pretty common time period that, you know, it, but it really does depend on how much accrued leave that employee has at that time.
After that, can they take leave without pay for a while?
They could certainly take, they're certainly eligible for FMLA leave if they want to go into unpaid status. We don't, you know, obviously we don't encourage that because it creates challenges with paying for benefits during that time period, because they'd have to be responsible for their benefit, any dependent benefit cost during that time period. But that always is an option, but we do try to avoid that in any way that we can.
Can you remind me how much sick leave people get a month?
It's 3.69 hours per pay period, two pay periods per month. So it's roughly a day a month.
And do we know what the average amount of time is people usually use on parental leave? I've got an average, I mean, do we have any average that's sitting out there? People take one month, two months, three months? Do you have any sense of that at all?
So you're not referring to the paid parental leave, but the total time duration that they take? Off the top of my head, I do not. I know we've had three recent child births, I should say. And I think in most of those cases, you know, that 12 weeks or so has been typically the average.
And for what it's, so for what it's worth, Washington State has a paid system and you, it's 16 weeks paid leave if you birth a child and it's, I think it's 14 if you don't birth a child, but you are a new parent with qualifying blah, blah. So, and so I've, I've talked to, we've talked about this bill and so I'm hoping. And so I'm hoping for everyone's benefit. There is no state law that requires us to be providing paid parental leave. And I'm really proud that Moscow did it this year with four weeks. Four weeks is nothing. I mean, I can't, that's like, in the, in the grand scheme of things of like, what, what makes sense for new parents? That goes by really fast as I'm watching my friends have kids and figure out what they're going to do. And we've also got a shortage of newborn daycare providers in our area. And so what I'd really love to see is us, I know we just rolled out four weeks. I'd love to see it go up to six weeks paid leave. And in for our employees for qualifying events, the parental on top of what would happen with sick and their flex days and everything else accrued leave. And so just to recap, the impact of us going from four to six, is there an impact to the budget? Or is it just a planning piece for your legislative?
So it's not as, you know, it's not a direct cost to the budget unless we have to hire somebody else to come in and perform the duties. So we do have, for example, we have an employee in the police department who recently had a child. We are upping hours of another part-time employee to do the work that that employee did previously. So there's a direct cost related to paying an additional employee. More often than not, it's, it's not a direct cost to the city, but it is a direct cost to coworkers to help cover the duties of it. And so more often than not, we don't bring in additional employees for that limited duration of time. With, with that one instance, they actually had just another part-time intern type position. They could pick up some additional hours to help that department during that time period. More, more likely, that burden just falls to coworkers and others to just pick up that load. Certainly, there's a cost. We are paying somebody for work that's not being performed. Somebody else has to perform those duties or they just get delayed into the future. And so it's not as much of a directly in front of us direct cost, but there certainly is a cost.
Intangible, so to speak. I just, even with that, it's the right thing to do in my mind to look out for employees. And I am sad that it's not something that we're necessarily going to see help with from the state level for a while, hopefully in my lifetime. But it's a, it's a conversation that I don't see them picking up urgently, at least this legislative session. So I have no concerns with the changes. I would like to see us amend it to six weeks paid leave. And I'm curious what my fellow council members think.
Gina.
I, I appreciate you putting it out the way you did and outlining it tonight because you're right. We saw it in bits and starts and bits and pieces. And it's, for whatever reason, tonight, we had two gigantic issues right at the end of the agenda. This is a gargantuan effort. And I really do, I really applaud this, the staff as well as the Transportation Commission on the last item. But I think Haley makes a compelling argument in that. You're right, it's not necessarily a direct hit to the budget. And, and it does sometimes mean extra work for coworkers. But we could also, on the flip side of that, say this is a retention benefit or a retention effort on our behalf. So I have to say that I, I would agree with the move to six weeks if it, if it came down to it. I think it's a good move. I think we have excellent employees. And I think two, two more weeks with a newborn is worth, worth the investment.
Sandra.
Yes, and I would, I would vote on that. But I also want to say that that really does put a lot of work onto those coworkers. And I mean, yes, four weeks, you're right. I mean, yay, it's something, but man, gone, blink of an eye. But I am concerned about having a smaller department and maybe one person has kids and, and others don't. And they're just re having to cover all the time. I, I think this is a work in progress. I would like to see it moved to six weeks. But I also think it's a work in progress that we need to make sure we're compensating those that are always the ones covering those shifts. Because that's also tough. And if they are getting extra work because of that extra two weeks, people are willing to do that, but it's hard. And I don't think that should be taken lightly either. And so I, I'm in favor of going to six. I like the amendment, but I do want to work on this and find ways that we can try and compensate rather than, hey, Billy's gone for six weeks, who's going to step up? And that's tough, too. So yes, but I just want to acknowledge that.
So mine comes up to a question with respect to my original question, which is, how long do people usually stay out? And so the question is, is are people taking longer than six weeks to stay out? It sounds to me like most people are taking three months. And do we have a cap on our medical, the time people can use sick leave? I mean, I will say I took three months off for my first and six for my second. But I will say that on the, that the city had a limit in terms of how much sick leave you could use, which meant after that, you're just kind of eating it. And so I'm curious, we don't have any cap in terms of someone has accumulated?
We have a maximum accumulation, it's 960 hours of sick leave, but we don't have a cap on its utilization for a specific purpose.
And can someone use the sick bank to acquire hours during the?
Not for that purpose underneath the policy before this evening. It's only, and as previously approved, it's only for a traumatic injury or illness.
It may feel like a traumatic.
If there was a medical reason, if there's a, yeah. If there's an underlying medical reason for it, then yes. But absent some unusual medical condition, no.
Okay. Julie, you can go.
You got Julia?
I think this is a good way to work on employee retention in the city. And it's not really going to cost us that much money because not everybody's having a baby or adopting a baby. And so I think doing the six week, I mean, doing the four week is actually great because nobody else does it. But six weeks is, is a nice benefit that I think is a way to help retention without spending a lot of money.
And my last thought on this, so we talk about that a lot, Sandra, with our benefit conversation at my place of employment, too. And like, we rolled out in-v-trio reimbursement. And like, that has had mixed feelings for some of us young folks who are like, we don't, what are the kids going to inherit if we have kids or if we don't have kids? And so I understand trying to deploy fair benefits that make sense. I have two big thoughts. A job should never be so important that if you're gone, having a kid, that your people can't cover for you. Like, that's, that's also a retention thing and a cross-training thing from a business perspective. And the other thought is, two weeks of parental leave likely means that you're not asking. So I, having, you shouldn't have to use sick time, banked sick time for a kid because that kid will be sick. Like, they're little germ factories. Oh, my gosh. And so I, I also am thinking in terms of if we can help with the initial first weeks of bonding for these families, there will also alleviate some of the, the later kind of in and out things that can come up with, that can happen with sick babies. So I'm, I'm glad we had the discussion. I also, I am also really excited at the momentum that we have as far as looking after our people and knowing that while we can keep looking at what the potential quote unquote, like, financial impact is to our people. And if we keep monitoring it, I'll feel good. But I would love to see an amendment to six weeks of paid parental leave, so.
But actually, the question there really is, it's not like a financial impact on people. It's much more a burden. It's a, it's a burden one, is it?
I hate that. I hate that word in this context.
I know, but the answer is, is that it's not as if we're hiring people more often than not to fill that. We're actually just asking people to pick up for a while. That's the reason I said it. And so it's not, it's, if we paid money to have people replaced temporarily during that, then it would be a financial burden. Now it just seems like it's going on the coworkers.
Fair. I just, I go back to, we have a shortage of newborn care providers in the area. And as a society, I don't think we're doing enough. And so I think even with the burden and using the word burden to label what it means to shift work between employees, the way we talk about it should change. And I, I think that's where we start.
So you're making a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proposed personnel policies with, and the associated resolution with an amendment to six weeks paid parental, that one, is that, and this one, too?
Correct, please.
So I got all three, okay, so.
So just two, two changes.
Two, with the two changes, six weeks parental leave and the recommendation to modify Section 2.4.8.1.
I'd actually like to talk about the, the other section. Health insurance, the 2.4.8.1.
We can still talk about with a motion on.
If we get a second, you can still, well, maybe we should talk about it now.
I can rescind my motion and we can continue discussion. That's fine.
Okay.
Go.
So this is probably not a very smart political thing to say, but I will say that being on city council while an honor is also a lot of work. And it's not that easy to recruit people that want to devote that much time to doing this. And it is not always easy to maintain a full-time, normal job while you sit on city council or are the mayor. And if you're under 65, the only way you get health insurance is to work or pay for it out of pocket, like I do. Because I work for myself mostly. But I don't think it's a bad thing to say that city to offer elected officials health insurance.
I don't think we're saying that at all. I think we're just saying it's not offered now until we consider the larger issue of compensation for elected officials when we come around to May. Because when we set the salary increases per cost of living, that would be a good time to introduce this as well because it also deals with compensation to elected officials. And it would be aligning the calendar with this.
So, but what is the rule now? The rule now is that you offer?
No, it's not.
What was the earlier language that you put up?
So the earlier language that currently is some. So currently, in the draft, it's at least on the M drive, which has not been dotted by resolution, but was approved by the council back in 2020. It was elected officials receive employment benefits as identified in a resolution adopted by the city council.
But no resolution.
But there is no such resolution.
Yeah.
But.
That's what happened through the revision of the draft document before it reached you this evening.
It was in there.
But we're talking about amending it again in 2020.
Three, for the time being, shifted back to, we don't provide benefits. Talk about it in May as part of the broader compensation for the council. But I don't, I don't disagree with respect time and the compensation provided. But I think it should be part of the overall conversation about compensation for council service. And we should have that this May. And then it could be incorporated in that ordinance if the council chooses to move forward with that. We incorporate it in the ordinance, we can modify this at that time. Once the council decided to what degree, if you want to provide benefits, it's 100%, 50%. And you can look at the cost. If you were looking at full coverage for just council, all elected officials of the seven elected officials, it's a $70,000 annual expense. So we'd have to take into consideration that, which was not incorporated in FY 2023 budget.
Even if we don't take it.
No, that'd be, that'd be assuming worst case scenario. I always have to assume if we offer it, it's taken. So assuming every, all seven elected, that would be essentially the, the total cost annually, which has not been something that we've contemplated in the past. So I'm not saying that we should not have that conversation. I just think we should have it in May as a conversation of the compensation as a whole. I just don't want to make that change this evening.
Okay, I was just confused.
Yeah, yeah, no, understand.
So we need a second? Well, she withdrew.
I withdrew and can bring it back with more clarity. I lay a motion down to, where am I looking? Approve the proposed personnel policies and the associated resolution with two, the two recommend, with the staff recommended amendment and another amendment to change the parental, paid parental leave to six weeks from four. Okay, he is nodding.
Second.
And if I may, just, just for clarification, what that, what that will do for changes to the document? So on page 54 of 77, under Section 89A, we'll now read, receive up to six weeks. It'll be 240 hours in parentheses of paid parental leave. And then we'll make a modification to the calculation also shown for the proration example under subsection D of that section as well. So just want to make sure you're clear on what the changes would be. Okay.
Okay, motion by Haley and second by Maureen. So, Julia.
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
And Haley?
Aye.
Okay, at past, and that takes us off the end of the agenda and into reports.
Thank you, Bill and Mia, for your work on that.
So you're on, Sandra.
Okay. I think I have notes from since we met last. If I have, starting to re-say anything, just slap me in the back of the head and I'll stop. On November 13th, we had the Harvest Dinner for the Leitak County Historical Society. And it was the first time since COVID. Soup, salad, desserts, and a silent auction. And it was nice to get that back in order. If you don't know, the Historical Society is really working to raise money for their historical windows. So watch out for different asks in your various newsletters on that. On November 15th, the Human Rights Commission ended up not being held because we did not have a quorum. We tried, we waited, and we just could not get that extra person to come. So we canceled that. On November 16th, probably the highlight of the month, I got to talk to Girl Scouts and it was awesome. And reached out to them because of the good work that they had been doing, especially with the Palouse Wildlife Rehabilitation Group. So fun to talk to them. On the 23rd, we, no, on the 30th, the vigil, we had the vigil for the students at the University of Idaho who were murdered and for their families and for their friends and loved ones. And it was, I thought it was very nice. And I know that all the city council folks up here were there. Tyler was there. And it was just, it was meaningful and heartfelt and, and tragic. And I know that I can easily speak for all of us. We say we're with all those who are mourning at this time and are with our law enforcement folks who are working vigorously to bring this to a conclusion. On December 61st, we had the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. And it was decided to go back to the RFP process. So that will be, I believe, put together January, people can start applying for that again. December 2nd, we had the Women's Center Gala, their 50th year, which was fun. That was held at the 1912 Center. And it was really great to see all the old slides and all the old accomplishments and all the new things beckoning on the horizon. So that was fun. And then on December 3rd, we had the first, maybe it wasn't the first, the first winter market of December, I'll say, just to edge my bets. And, and that was nice. It was a big snowy day and it looked very festive and very holiday-esque. And it's nice to get that kicked off again for our holiday season. I'm sure I missed something, but that's a good smattering of what I've been on.
Very good. Maureen?
Well, Sandra, just two of mine and one was the URA meeting. And the other one was the transportation, which Cody then took care of for me. And so the last one was the Fire Department Awards Dinner on December 3rd, which was very nice. And it was fun to see everybody dressed up and some people being in their uniform. And I didn't see anyone this year having been called out on a fire. In contrast, last year, the same table got called out like three times. So, and what I also thought was nice is that some of the older volunteers actually were the ones that volunteered to make sure that they were on call that night. Dan Eckert, for one, the university. And so the young ones could stay there with their partners and enjoy their dinner. So we thank the people in the Fire Department for all the work that they do as volunteers.
And I might just jump on there and add that thanks go to Northwest River Supply, who donated something like $6,000 worth of stuff to be raffled off at that banquet.
Free raffle off, so raffle off sounds like you're buying it, but they gave you these. When you walked in the door, you got one.
You got a ticket and then you got stuff. So some of the younger volunteers were really quite thrilled at having their number pulled on some of that stuff.
And there was also a gift certificate to Starbucks under certain, at one chair at every table. And I happened to get it this time. I'm thinking, I never win anything, but under my chair was a $10 sticker for Starbucks. But I think that actually there was like, I hate to disagree with you, but I think they said at some point it was like $7,000 from NRS, which was so impressive.
Really was. Okay, Gina.
You know, I was looking through my calendar here. I don't think I've done anything since we met the last time. I think, actually, the tree commission tomorrow was canceled. And so I'm a little bit heartbroken in that that would have been my last, potentially my last tree commission meeting, period. Because we'll get new committees before it actually meets again. But I might just, I might just break all the rules and sit in there anyway because I'm kind of addicted. I did have the distinct pleasure of sitting through our strategic planning meeting or workshop last week. And I continue to just be kind of gobsmacked by the fact that we can all be as different as we are. And when it comes down to it, we have really good cohesive thought as a, as a council. And so I was really impressed with that. So I was really impressed with that. I also had the honor of being part of the staff of the vigil. And I was never, I've never been prouder of our community than when everybody's holding up those little stupid apps on their phone and they turn to show the families the, the solidarity and the, and just the community that is us. And I was very proud of us and enjoyed that very much. And I've gone back to that picture numerous times to remember myself in the ugliness that has been the last couple weeks, that there is good out there still. So, amen.
Julia.
Well, let's see. We have had a lot of canceled meetings. I don't know, yeah, I got nothing, nothing exciting except my report. We, I did have fair and affordable housing on Thursday. The first, we worked on updating a list of impediments to affordable housing, I mean, fair housing, excuse me. And, and we had strategic planning, as we've all talked about, which fair and affordable housing is on there. The vigil on the 30th, which was very touching. And Moscow Fire Department banquet on the 3rd of December. I've also been having my own little office hours at the coffee shop on Tuesday mornings. Anybody can come talk to me about what you like to see in Moscow. So, so that's been fun. I had some, I've had some really nice conversations.
Sweet. Which coffee shop?
Uh, right now I'm doing it at One World, I'll probably change it up.
Okay.
If you move, they're not going to know where you are.
I know, I don't want to confuse people early on.
Haley.
Uh, so, uh, highly recommend leaving the country for Election Day and voting, voting early. I had a really great Election Day because I wasn't refreshing every minute. So I missed our November 7th update, so I'm going as far back as what happened the week of the 14th. So the 14th, 15th, and 16th was the North Idaho Legislative Tour, which was hosted by the Lewiston, Lewiston, Clarkson, Lewis-Clark Valley Chamber of Commerce. So you had nearly every new legislator and our new lieutenant governor and the governor in the valley and Moscow, learning about things that are important to North Idaho. It's been happening for 40 years. So it was, it always happens right after Election Day. It is like drinking from a fire hose from them and it's important that they get here. And we had a pretty good showing and so that was cool to see. And then Smart Transit, we hired some, we hired a new executive director, which I'm really, really, really excited about. She will be a great match for the team. There will be a vacancy on Smart Transit. So if you're interested in improving our free, free, free transportation in Moscow, in and around Moscow, there will be an opening, maybe two openings with, as the year ends. So. I think two.
Are you talking about job openings?
Nope, sorry, I'm sorry, board, board, board of director opportunities.
Just wanted to clarify.
You're right. So Smart Transit and Nilt were my two updates. And, uh, yeah, winter market on Saturday, looking forward to it. And alternative giving market is on my calendar, Sandra, for Tuesday, the 13th, in the evening to support our local nonprofits. That's what I got.
Well, for me, working backwards in time, on Friday, we had the Recovery Center staged a roundtable on resources for Moscow's stressful times where various agencies who provide counseling and support to people gave a talk about what they can do to help out for people who need some respite from the current climate of things. And that was very nice to hear and made it into the newspaper even better, so more people knew about it. Prior to that, the airport board met and I'm happy to say that load factor for the, both the Boise and Seattle flights are 73%. So they're flying pretty darn full these days and the number of cancellations is staying right about zero. So thank you, new instrument landing system. If you've driven on the road, you can, and you peer off to the airport side of Airport Road, you can start to see this happening. This is the footprint of the terminal and everything in green is there. And if you look, you can see the top of the basement walls now getting above ground. Structural steel is showing up, so they're going to lay steel across that basement wall, pour the floor and carry on all the way through winter with work on that place. So it's on track for getting done when it's supposed to, very encouraging. And I went down to Boise to the Association of Idaho Cities meeting and started laying out what the municipalities in the state of Idaho are going to be working with the legislature on this year, both in terms of advancing issues of importance to the cities and also fending off issues that are more detrimental to the cities. So very good meeting was had there. And that's a quickie snapshot of what I've been up to. Bill, what do you got from staff?
Two quick updates, looking ahead for council committee and council meeting. So we'd have committees on December 12th, council meeting on December 19th. It does look like we will have agenda items to have probably one committee meeting on the 12th and then a probably fairly quick council meeting on the 19th. So we do not anticipate canceling that meeting at this time. The other item is just, you probably saw it, yes?
That means it will probably be pushing it out to from three o'clock to four o'clock.
Correct. Yeah, I would, I would expect that would be the case. And then the other just quick item is the registration has opened for the City Officials' Day at the Capitol coming up on January 26th. Please let Taylor know if you'd like to attend. She can assist with making travel and accommodation reservations for you. And that's all.
Okay.
I think we should adjourn. Our second pass.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody out there.